Good evening and welcome to all our guests in the gallery tonight. New student trustees, parents, and guests. Welcome to Tuesday, May 5th, regular board meeting. Just for your information, this is audio and video recorded and can be found on our YouTube channel. If we could have our opening prayer by our now student trustee, Joel, please, or now.
Thank you. So just general information for the prayer. Where it says "left," I'm going to ask all the trustees to read that part. And where it says "right," I'm going to ask all the superintendents behind me to read that. So if you'll all join me now. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. We offer up our prayers this evening for the deceased members of our extended Halton Catholic system. Marie Gallant, mother of Claudette Jeffrey, educational assistant at St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School in Georgetown. Mariola Pourniauski, mother of Sylvia Zeiman, ILE instructor at Thomas Burton Center in Oakville. John Janas Cozier, senior, former custodian at Ascension Catholic Elementary School Burlington, and father of John Cozier, secondary teacher at St. the Nations of Loyola Catholic Secondary School in Oakville. Mary O'Connor, mother of Joan Merrick, educational assistant at St. Andrew Catholic Elementary School in Oakville. God, giver of life, we come before you full of expectations and hopes for this Easter season. Renew us, refresh us. Help us to become more fully aware of your presence as the Potter who molds us and fashions us. May we be open to your work in our lives. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. Let us attentively listen to the inspiration of Saint Aranias. Here we encounter God as the artist Potter who desires to shape us into beautiful earthen vessels. It is God who shapes you. If then you are the work of God, await the hand of the artist, who does all things in due season. Offer the Potter your heart, soft and tractable, and keep the form in which the artist has fashioned you. Let your clay be moist, lest you grow hard and loose, the imprint of the Potter's finger. The response is, gracious God, shape us anew, for we are fearfully, wonderfully made, fearfully, wonderfully made.
(Inaudible)
We give you thanks, Lord, for we are fearfully, wonderfully made. Wonderful are your works. You are the Potter. We are the clay, the work of your hands. You have touched us with your goodness. You have made us in your image, into your likeness you have shaped us. Gracious God, shape us anew, for we are fearfully, wonderfully made, fearfully, wonderfully made.
(Inaudible)
You have touched us, Lord, and we have come back. We have recoiled from your hands. We have turned away in fear. We have known waited, waited for our return, and we found new courage, and we turn again to you. You received us into your hands, and holding us in your tender mercy, professing us with your gentle touch. Gracious God, shape us anew, for we are fearfully, wonderfully made, fearfully, wonderfully made. You have touched us, Lord, and we have pardoned ourselves away from you. We have resisted your touch. We have tried to shape ourselves, and we have failed. Yet it has been for you to leave us. You did not remove your hand from us. When we let our severing hearts melt, we soften again to your touch. Gracious God, shape us anew, for we are fearfully, wonderfully made, fearfully, wonderfully made.
(Inaudible)
We form us into beauty and grace and love in us. You touched us and made us whole, showing us the depth of your love. You made us whole, putting on us what we were not. In turn, we look on ourselves and receive your perfect hand, shaping your spirit and your goodness. You grace you and make you thank, oh, gracious God. Gracious God, shape us anew, for we are fearfully, wonderfully made, fearfully, wonderfully made. We ask all this through Christ our Lord, amen, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Joel. I can ask trustee Intomasi for the motions adopted and information received in camera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three retirements. Mary Ann DiMato, let's see, thirty years service with the board, Anne Koznick with thirty-six years, and Lucy Mendela with twenty-six years, effective June 30th, 2015. We also have John Langel, appointed as acting elementary principal, effective April 28th, 2015, with an end date to be determined at St. Anne. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Intomasi. And now we move to approval of the agenda. And before I ask for a mover, I would like to ask that we move 10.6, the appointment of student trustees, to 10.3 in order to accommodate our guests. Do I have a mover as amended? Trustee Quinn? Trustee Marai, seconded, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. Do we have any declarations of conflict of interest this evening? Seeing none, move on to our presentation. The Halton Catholic District School Board Bullying Prevention Awards 2014-2015. Superintendent Pennelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure this evening to welcome our guests and to also to share with trustees this evening our ongoing tradition of recognizing the Halton Catholic District School Board Bullying Prevention Awards for this year, 2014-2015. This is our partnership that we work with Halton Regional Police Services that recognizes the profound importance of creating safe and inclusive communities and engaging students in that process. First and foremost, we need to recognize our student trustees, our current student trustees, Joel, Chloe, and Jason, who have continued to work with senior admin and all of us together in ensuring that this initiative in bullying prevention continues to be entrenched in our board's practice. As always, this is our recognition, and this is our second annual recognition for awards, in recognizing and encouraging students in grades six to twelve that are challenged to develop creative arts-based public service messages that use the theme, "Give respect, get respect." And so, the students themselves are part of the process, and we judge separate categories, best poster, best video, and best original song. During 2014-15, we had tremendous response to this. We had over, we had thirty-three elementary schools take part in this. We had seven of our high schools take part in this, and that's amazing. That means over three hundred and seventy-five students, system-wide, were engaged in this process. The students then were all, from those respective schools, were gathered at Corpus, and in fact, they all voted on the various categories. They had fourteen contenders that they were required to vote, and the challenge was indeed very difficult for them. And so, the best poster will be recognized, the best video and the best song will be recognized this evening. Those winners who are here this evening also went forward to the regional, which was held with all other partners, including the Halton Regional Police, on April 28th at the Cineplex Theater in Oakville. And all those students were recognized at that event. Student staff and noted guests viewed and showcased all the entries that were submitted across the region, and as you are aware, these submissions will then be displayed throughout Halton Region, on buses, on bus shelters, on billboards, in malls, and really also at the movie theaters last year at the drive-in. So this is really a wonderful display and recognition of talents within our students and also the students themselves voting and selecting these categories. What I'd like to do at this point in time is I'd like to start with the recognition of the poster, and we're going to display the poster, the winning poster that was selected by the students, and they voted on this. And I'd also like to recognize and call up at this point in time if we could recognize Tina Wang and the school staff accompanying her as principals, Linda Trentafulo, to come up and be recognized at this point in time. If we can have the chair and our director please present our recipients. At this time, we would also like to share with you the best original song, and this is from the Students of St. If I can have, and we'd like to recognize Volusia Pereira, who's coming to accept on behalf of the St. Benedict Group, as well as Sharon Deary and Kevin Sinclair, teachers of St. Benedict, to please come up and accept. Video that you saw this evening was the very first time they performed, and that was actually at our annual meeting, and they got better and they got confident as they performed the various other times. So congratulations, and you can download it as well. They were on CP, and they were also on CP24 in the morning. So moving along, we have the winner of the video category, and if we can have that, please.
You flip, alone.
Alone.
Do it, do it.
Alone.
Fat, fat, alone.
Alone.
Ugly, ugly, alone.
Alone.
Loose, very, loose, very, alone.
Alone.
Redding Catholic Secondary School, and Kathy Perrino, teacher, join them in recognition.
So if you can join me in congratulating to our winners tonight and all our other students.
Thank you, Superintendent Pennelli, and thank you to everyone. Now we are moving on to delegations, which we have none. Approval of the minutes from our regular board meeting of April 21st. We have a mover, please. Trustee Quinn, seconded. Trustee Trice, all in favor? Thank you. Business arising from previous meetings is summarized here. Any questions? None? Action items? We have none. Staff reports, budget estimates, update. Superintendent McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first budget estimates update report. Yeah, sorry. Madam Chair, was it something I said?
Yeah. I think so.
This is the first budget estimates update report we're bringing forward to trustees of the first of four over the two meetings in May and the two meetings in June. We have brought this report forward based on the EFS forms which we have received. However, they are, the process is not complete, and if I can draw your attention to the box on the second page of the report, we try to outline there the things that are outstanding. And I'm having computer issues here, but it's on page eleven of your package. So these need to be taken. This is the first cut we've made at these, and it shows some $1.5 million shortfall. We are, we did talk about this yesterday at Admin Council. Further discussions ensued today with Roxanna and a number of superintendents. We have identified some areas for potential reduction, and so, you know, there's further work to be done. We tried to explain the various sections of the revenues, enrollment, and expenses in the report, and we did include, in response to a query from trustee Quinn, we did at the last meeting or the trustee budget presentation, I think it was, Appendix I, which at the high level explains or tries to explain the student transportation grant and the expenditures that we receive from HSTS, Halton Student Transportation Services, just to provide a little more detail, Madam Chair, on one specific item in the report. So myself, other members of senior staff, or Roxanna, would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I have a number of questions that I've spoken to superintendent about, and I propose to submit them in writing and share them with all the trustees and hope that those answers will be included in the package for the next meeting on the public record, both to give me information as a new trustee and to see what the spending history has been from my own information. But I do have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, the first being on page sixteen regarding teacher consultants. It says that, I read, 3.3 million allocated for teacher consultants, but on the appendix on page seventeen, it seems to show that there's 2.3 million allocated. So can you explain to me what I may have missed between the 3.3 million for teacher consultants on page sixteen and the 2.3 million on page seventeen?
Madam Chair, I'll let Roxanna explain that.
Thank you. Teacher consultants are divided into regular teacher consultants and special education. So actually, if you go to page eighteen, Appendix A4, and we do have to update the references to the appendices, they should say A3 and A4, my apologies, but it's, if we add the two together, the 2. roughly four million, and the 943,000 in Appendix A4 in consultant salaries, benefits, supplies, and so forth, we get to that number. So they are separated because special education funding is enveloped, and we keep it separate in terms of expenditures as well.
Thank you. May I continue with my questions, please? Through you, Madam Chair, to superintendent McMahon, of all the funds collected by the board from all sources, what is the percentage in the estimated dollar figure that our board can allocate with discretion? So outside of the collective bargaining commitments, debt repayments, utilities, and real fixed costs, what percentage are we actually meant to sign off on here through this table?
Madam Chair, I don't, I do not have an exact percentage. I can assure trustee Quinn it is very little, meaning that if you wanted to add something, you would have to take something away.
But it's in the $50 million range, is that?
Discretionary?
Yes.
Through you, Madam, absolutely not.
No.
No. Not fifty, 50 million? No. Our entire budget, through you, Madam Chair, is spoken for. There is, there are items that we've raised at the presentation for consideration. You could look at, for example, staff not bound by collective agreement. So those are, could you reduce that area? Yes, you could, if you wanted to do something else. So, you know, we can, we can make an attempt to quantify those, but those, you know, any reductions in those areas would affect the system in some way or another, and I'd have to let the superintendents in charge of those portfolios address those, so.
Okay. May I continue, please, through you, Madam Chair? On page thirteen of the package, there's $3 million allotted for the upcoming year to schools. 1.8 for elementary, 1.2 for high schools. How do we arrive at that number, and what directions are the schools giving and using those funds?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I need the reference again. Sorry, what page is it?
Page thirteen.
Thirteen.
And it's $3 million allocated for a school use.
Oh, thirteen, okay. Okay, sorry, so, let's, those are the school budgets that are allocated to the schools for certain items, you know, learning materials would be an example, and I can let the school superintendents explain exactly what those are. So maybe I didn't quite catch the question.
The question was, how was that $3 million number arrived at, and what directions are the schools given on using those funds?
Okay. It is largely an historical number, and again, in school boards, it depends on how much items or what items are purchased centrally. For example, our board, through superintendent Negro's portfolio and curriculum, we buy a lot of textbooks. Other school boards push those out to the schools, let them. In our case, we buy textbooks centrally. So those particular, those particular budgets have line items that have probably an historical amount behind them that are increased or decreased each year, and I'll let one of the school superintendents perhaps speak to more what exactly it's spent on, but they're line items that we give guidance on, and maybe Lori or Tim or Camilla would like to address maybe more what the, they've all been principals, so they know what those items are. Through you, Madam Chair, I can speak to a couple of items. There's certain lines within them. Majority of the budget would go to consumables throughout the year. That would be supplies that would be required in the classroom for students and for programs. Copying expenses is part of that. There is textbooks in terms of upgrading. We do do central purchases, but there is the need to upgrade or to replenish your stock of textbooks. There is a faith formation piece in there. Library as well is another line. So there's a number of lines that certainly take a majority of the budget that is provided to each of the schools.
I think, I don't ask that question looking to reduce that number, I just want to know how we arrive at it, and maybe that's something.
Roxanna has to just say something here.
Just to, just on that, the, one clarification is this isn't school generated funds. This is board budget allocated to schools for the purchase of consumables within their, the school office portfolio. So it is separate from the 12 million, 12 and a half million in school generated funds. It is determined also based on enrollment, so a larger school will get more of that funding than a smaller school. It will change from year to year based on where their enrollment is going. So for example, with the opening of a new school, with the change in boundary and students moving from one school to the other, that money will follow to the other school. So mainly based on enrollment, it is also based on staffing numbers, and it has been adjusted to meet their needs. There's a central contingency for schools that is allocated to superintendents of the families of schools, and they can assist the schools further. So for example, if they have a need, that's a one-time need, they can do it within their allocated budget, there is that as well. So it will be. So, it will be slightly different from year to year and it is outside school generated funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I continue, Madam Chair? A few more questions.
Just a clarification, Trustee Quinn, are you going through your list or...
No, I, I have a number of pertinent questions and I, I will submit many more, I promise. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent McMahon, on page 14, you indicate there's a $1.6 million shortfall on the depreciation expenses projected. Where, where are we planning to get that shortfall matched or fixed?
Well, through you, Madam Chair, with that line is general because it's other areas in the budget. So, the explanation for that, we've tried to include it there, it's to do with what's called unsupported capital and the reason why we have that difference is because we spent in accordance with the ministry funding model in the past and we used some renewal funding, school renewal funding to, to pay for debenture financing, mortgage financing related to our schools. When the ministry changed the rules some three or four years ago, they said that unsupported amount, you can fund that from your renewal allocation every year, and I'm trying to keep this as simple as I can, and we're not going to fund it, we're going to call that unsupported. The, the new pupil places grant at that time, which, which they are continuing to fund, they called that supported. So, it results in discrepancy. Where do we find it? We find it in other areas. There's no one place that's funding it particular, it's all other areas of the budget. We have to take it in, because we now have to record fixed assets on our books, which came in, gosh, about six or seven years ago now, we, we have to, we have to record amortization of our fixed assets and there's a, there's a ministry item in our financials and when we get to the financials, I can, I can show you that, called deferred capital contributions. It's basically a big receivable from the ministry and we draw that down, bring it into revenue to offset our amortization and because of that unsupported, there's a shortfall. So, we just have to bring the deferred capital contributions into revenue, record the amortization, that difference roots there and the other revenues and expenses, lower expenses, higher revenues would, would offset that. It's just brought into the mix. That's how the PSAB, Public Sector Accounting Board, accounting works. I don't like it. Roxanna doesn't like it either. We're not the standard-setting bean counters, if you will, but that's the way it is.
Thank you. So...
Excuse me, Trustee Marai has a question.
May, may I ask one more question and I'll be finished? So, just through you, Madam Chair, to the director. So, at what point in the role of trustees do we, apart from the, the reading I've done of these, of these, these numbers, make a decision as a board to allocate funds one way or another through that discretionary money? So, we have years of budget spending that is either increasing or decreasing by 2% or 3%, maybe more or less, and then at the end we try and get an even balance. But the trustees, at what point do we discuss what our priorities are? Maybe it's special education or it's the math project we're going to discuss today. Where do we, as trustees, have a, a motion and a vote saying, we think we should spend an extra $6 million on special ed this year or we should spend an extra $10 million on math education? At what point does that discussion come before the board members rather than just getting a report from the superintendent and going forward?
Through you, Madam Chair, since we have these four series of budgets bringing forward, the, the recommendations that are coming forward to you from the trustee, or from the superintendents are meant to support the work that is seen in our current strategic plan and to support the, the initiatives that trustees have, want us to implement in our system. If there is a direction, a change in direction, and I presume that would happen through the renewal of our strategic plan, then we would change our budget direction and we would go back to the drawing table and reallocate funds. But this, this is our best, this is our best guess and work as to what the needs of the system are according to what the direction we've received through our strategic plan, through the outcomes and through the indicators that we're working from currently. So, if you have suggestions, you can, you can make them known and if, if it's doable and we go back to the drawing board and we talk about it every Monday, we will do that. This is our, this is our best work right now. It's all senior staff put their heads together and, and come up with what they believe the trustees would want us to do when it comes to the budget preparation with very limited funds that we have left over after salary and benefits are accounted for in the district.
Thank you. Trustee Marai?
Just two quick questions. The first being, I see that the line item directors and supervisory officer salaries and benefits has gone down. Looking at the next, I'm sorry, this is on page 19. So, just, that was a preface and, but I also see that business and general administration salaries and benefits has gone from 3.1 million to 3.5 over the past few years. What's, like, what position are we, positions are we actually investing in that, that have an effect on our, our system itself? Just want some clarification on that.
Madam Chair, on the first item, directors and supervisory officers, I believe the answer to that is some of the education program, other grants that we get, examples and Superintendent Negro could speak to the, as an example, there's certain grants we get and we can charge salaries to those grants that are outside the GSN. So, we show those, Roxanne, I think on recoverable line, I think, or separately, so they're not included in there. That's why that number has gone down. Back, going back too, though, we were required to make a 10% reduction in that line too and I think it was in the 12, 13 timeframe too. So, that's going to be reflective of, of moving, moving down and we had two superintendents, as I recall, one was seconded to the ministry and one retired and they were not replaced at that time. So, that, that's sort of a bit of historical context. Sorry, and the other, through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Marai, the other item was on that same...
It was connected.
Okay.
In regards to the salary, the general administration.
Going, going up.
Going, going up.
Okay, and, and sure, and on that one, there are a number of, of positions in that line that continue to receive salary increases. They are not frozen, they move through the grid. Our benefits costs have gone up significantly and Superintendent O'Hara can comment on that particular item if trustees desire. And sick leave costs, which is increasing across all of our salary areas, would also contribute to that. Roxanne, I don't know if you had other items to, to...
Sure. The, I would suggest you compare the original budget to, from 2014, 15 to the 15, 16 budget. The reduction in revised is simply for vacancies that haven't been filled. So, that was the result there. As a, we expect those positions to be fully filled in 15, 16, so we brought those up just to keep that in mind. So, the comparison should really be between that original budget.
Trustee Marai?
Marai, one follow-up. Just in regards to, this is an important communication piece, I just want to get right when it comes to talking to the public about the, the budget process and our constraints. And that's on the next page, page 20, in regards to utilities hydro, because it's obviously something that's affecting quite a few ratepayers in Ontario. And my question is a bit of clarification on if the province has kept up with, I think I know the answer to this, but I want clarity, has the province kept up in funding us for their, their policy decisions that have affected hydro rates in this province and what impacts it has on school boards across the province?
Through you, Madam Chair, they have not, clearly, and the increases which we indicated in the GSN regulations, GS, sorry, Grant for Student Needs, the, the, in the past few years have been 2% overall, I think, Roxanne, and 7% for electricity. Perhaps Mr. Corbaccio may want to comment, but those hardly keep up with the increases we're seeing in water, natural gas and hydro. We're seeing numbers in the 40% range, I think, Jacomo over, over, we, and maybe you want to add that in one, in one of the utilities.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Marai. The province has given us some increases, but as Mr. McMahon has pointed out, it's not kept pace. The strategy the province is also trying to do is working through a number of energy initiatives, reduction initiatives, is try and get the boards to reduce their energy by getting more efficient mechanical systems, electrical systems and closing school sites down as well. That's all part of the strategy. If you've got less square footage to heat and to light, then the cost comes out. So, it's sort of attacking it from both ends, but we're not getting a full grant amount that matches the increases that would come on our hydro, water and gas bills. And your gas has been not, has been rather stable, it's been more the hydro and the water and, and water's an interesting one because the more you conserve, your price, your rates will still go up because you have to have a certain set amount of money to run the plants. So, that's kind of a, an odd one, but it's still, it's a good thing to do for the environment is to reduce our consumption of utilities.
Trustee Rabenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Superintendent McMahon, I don't doubt that the staff are trying to stretch the dollars as well as they can. Could you tell me if we are still on target to walking, working towards a balanced budget?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Rabenda, yes, we are. The shortfall is indicated in this report's 1.5 million. We're looking at some numbers today. We may be, maybe two-thirds of the way tentatively to, to looking at that, to, to covering that. We've heard from trustees before and that's really what I was going to say in, in response to Trustee Quinn's queries, which I do appreciate and, and we'd be certainly be happy to answer any questions any of the trustees, especially the new ones, have on the budget. Now, I've lost my train of thought after all, that was good. Sorry, the, the limits on, on the balanced budget, a compliant budget, we tried to show it in a slide in that budget presentation, we cannot have a shortfall of more than 1% of our allocation, which is about 3 million. We've heard and, and we put it in the goals and objectives, which are attached to the report too, that the goal is a balanced budget and so, we don't even want to be, right now, 1.5 million shortfall would be compliant because it's less than the 3 million, but we're not, we're working towards balancing that and we feel that we can make, we've still got a ways to go, but we feel with the, with the combined effort of everyone on our senior team that we can, we can hopefully reduce that shortfall and, and arrive at a balanced budget. The, there's still a number of factors, as I highlighted, and that are bolded on the second page of the report. One of them is our enrollment assumptions right now and they may have to be adjusted going forward. They, what, if they did go down, they would reduce our revenues and they would also reduce our expenditures, so you would just see a lower quantum of money in the total budget. But certainly, Madam Chair, that is the goal and we have been working away at this with, with our senior team, as, as the director indicated, over the last number of, of administrative council meetings and will continue to do so because we've heard the direction from the trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McMahon. Moving on to 9.2, core French resource selection. Superintendent Negro?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is an example of a system purchase of resources that follows on the past two purchases of the core French, French resource that is called ECOPO and we did that for grades four and five. This staff report outlines the details of our proposed purchase for the grade course, the grade six resource, which is supported by a technology purchase that we engaged in for the first two grades, so there is no further technology support needed for this particular resource. The details are in the report. We have one copy per French teacher along with 10 copies of the paper-based resource that will give access to those that might not have internet access at home and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this purchase.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent McMahon on this issue. What is the, the negotiation process for a purchase with, with these type of suppliers? I know that they have a very limited number of markets to which they can sell these things and we are actually the ones who will dictate the success of their companies based on our purchases. What kind of purchasing process do we go through to ensure we're getting the best rates from these, from these groups?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Quinn. I'll start and perhaps turn it over to Superintendent Negro. For any purchases in the board, we follow the dollar thresholds within our purchasing policies and procedures. So, an item of this dollar amount is over $50,000, which would recall for an RFP or, I'm sorry, a request for proposal or a request for tender. If there is a supplier, or if there's only one supplier, it could be single source or sole source, so it depends on the particular item, but I'll, I'll let Superintendent Negro expand on that further.
Through you, Madam Chair. Very recently, I had an experience around this whole exercise with, I won't name the publisher, but it's the publisher of our religion resource. And we, we went to the publisher and asked the publisher to please consider repackaging the resource in a different way because we didn't really want to purchase one part of it. And the publisher, who's pretty much the only publisher in town on this particular resource, repackaged the resource but came up with roughly the same price. So, we really are in many ways beholden to this. We've, we've talked about arrangements where we can, you know, potentially team up with other boards to increase our, our buying power, but it, this is the reality of textbook purchases in the province of Ontario. What I will say to you is this, I have instructed our team with the blessing, I think, of, of senior team to look into resources, resource alternatives other than textbooks and it's our intent, where possible, not to purchase textbooks, but to purchase resources that are flexible, that are dynamic in scope. And so, as an example, we purchased a grade 10 resource for some of our civics teachers that is online. We will supplement it with technology if necessary, but we are looking at ways not to be beholden to textbooks. We think it, there's better ways of presenting curriculum, there's better ways of engaging teachers in the process of teaching, right? Without, in some, in some respects, you know, without textbooks. So, we are looking at all of those things, we are looking at ways to save. In other words, we would, you'll notice in this one that there's no class set here of paper-based resources. We buy the 10 per teacher to have enough on hand in case students might need them who do not have internet access, but we are as frugal as possible when we are purchasing these textbooks. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not on anybody's, any publisher's Christmas card list, I don't think. I don't know.
Thank you, Superintendent Negro. Trustee Marai?
One quick question. Do you think you could send around some examples of some of the alternatives you're looking at so we can get a better idea of this? Because obviously, the industry's changing significantly, but we need to see what direction we're going in and what direction the industry's going in.
Certainly can.
Moving on to our student trustee update. No, Jason?
We're going to be starting with our Achieving Believing Belonging Report. I'm going to start with belonging today. So, at Notre Dame High School, we had the third annual girls' night in, I was obviously not there, but I heard it was a big success. The night was dedicated to appreciating the talents females bring to our Notre Dame community. There was a variety of speakers, session speakers and then a keynote. On Friday, April 17, students were given the opportunity to celebrate Leadership and Empowerment Day at Corpus Christi High School, High School as well. This day was built to empower and encourage students to take an active role in their high school and they participated in a variety of sport-like and team... in a variety of sport-like and team-building activities throughout the day. And that was where the pillar of belonging.
Uh, under the pillar of believing, um, over the past month, we've had a lot of Easter celebrations in all of our schools. Uh, but St. Thomas Aquinas had a special drama presentation. Uh, they illustrated the true meaning of Easter and, uh, once again reminding students that Easter is more than chocolate and Easter bunny. Um, for our Blessed Because campaign, uh, which we've talked about at past meetings, um, we are, we have started to implement that this week as it is Catholic Education Week. Um, so student senators have been told to create their banners which say Blessed Because on them. And, um, all throughout this week, um, secondary students will be coming up to these banners and writing down what they're thankful for, um, in their lives, um, as kind of like a visual reminder of how blessed we are as students. Um, a letter was sent out from the three of us to the administration for, um, secondary and elementary stu-, uh, schools, sorry, um, outlining the events for the week and what teachers and, uh, should expect. Uh, we've asked that the elementary students or elementary teachers organize some sort of visual art or, uh, representation of why they're thankful. So whether it comes in the form of a video, um, a song like Saint Benedict, or, um, a poster, an art piece, um, just something that shows their contribution as well as all students don't have social media at that age, or hopefully they don't. Um, we've also asked secondary students and I guess, um, older elementary students to use the hashtag Blessed Because. Um, so if you want to use the hashtag, hashtag Blessed Because on, um, our actual Ontario Catholic Student Youth Day, which is this Thursday, um, that would be much appreciated. We love all your support. Um, and now I'm gonna turn it over for Chloe for, um...
Um, good evening, everyone. So I am presenting under the pillar of achieving. So we've had quite a couple of outstanding achievements at Bishop Reading. I guess there's something in the air going on down there where our students are just exceptionally excelling. Um, so last week we had Rebecca McLaren, who represented our school as, um, the student of excellence. Um, so I know that a couple of you trustees were down there, um, for that award ceremony. So she is currently our co-president, um, of Student Council. She's done quite a lot of things around school, and, um, she was just accepted into the Richards, uh, Richard Ivey School of Business at Western, um, with early, early advanced entry as well as, um, techno and media studies. So she's going, um, quite a long way with her future. Um, definitely done a lot for the school. So we are thrilled to have her represent us because, um, she is the creme de la creme, as they like to say. Um, as well, Alicia Alba, grade eleven student, um, she got accepted into, she got accepted to represent, um, the Milton Rotary Club at their Canadian, at their Citizens in Adventure Program. So, um, students from all over Ontario, I believe, go down to Ottawa, um, and they represent their, each of the different, um, Rotary Cubs in different cities and towns. And they get kind of like a behind-the-scenes look at government and how government works in Canadian government, and they discuss issues and kind of solutions to those different issues. Um, so kind of a little bit of what we do here, but, um, I guess a little bit more elaborate building, I guess. Um, get to see Stephen Harper, hopefully, take some pics. Um, and then as well, um, we just had Jennifer Powell. She is another grade eleven student at, um, Bishop Reading. She participated in Python's pick, so that's kind of like the secondary, um, elementary, the secondary school version of Dragon's Den or Shark Tank for those of you who've seen it. Um, so she went second place. She pitched her idea of having an app that sends out personal, um, greetings for different events. Um, so she ended up, like I said, winning second place. She went away with a monetary, um, a monetary, like monetary amount, does not make sense, monetary amount of, um, fifteen hundred dollars. If any of you guys have that money laying around, I'll be happy to take it. Um, so the school is definitely very impressed. She is also part of DECA, and it's been doing a lot of business-oriented things around the school. Um, so once again, her goal is to get into Ivy as well. So hopefully we will have a lot of business people graduating from Bishop Reading. So for any of you guys who are looking for success in sending your children to, to elementary, to secondary schools, Bishop Reading is the place to be because we will be sending some kids to Harvard. Um, and then to finish off, we just, um, concluded our, um, play, our school play. We had three presentations of that. Um, so it's called Re-Read, and it's a composition of Wicked, um, The Wizard of Oz, and, um, oh, and, um, oh, and The Wizard. Um, so they put kind of those three plays together and they made one big kind of mashup of it. Um, I heard a lot of great reviews from that, and the students dressed up in, um, a lot of cool elaborate costumes and they had showings at night that were very successful, and people in the community came to see that as well. Um, so we tend to put on a lot of good plays, not to brag or anything, or not to be biased, but we have a lot of good drama students as well. Um, and then just to conclude with the regular and final general student trustee report. Um, so the three of us, along with twelve student senators, will be going to a conference from this, happening this Thursday all the way through Saturday. Um, so it is called the Ontario Catholic Student Youth Conference. So different Catholic youth leaders from all over Ontario come, and we get together in London, and we talk about, um, what we can do to kind of better ourselves as leaders, um, and issues that we can plan, and kind of, um, doing a lot of networking as well as professional development. So we are definitely looking forward to that and bringing our senators and having them experience that. Um, we are also finalizing everything for our conference on May thirteenth, which is our annual leadership conference. So we have all our workshops, um, set, and we consolidated that with our senators. Um, we have, like Joel had mentioned last evening, we have buses booked. Um, we're expecting ten to twelve students from each school, um, so anywhere from ninety to a hundred students in total. And we are very excited. We've, our senators as well as us have worked very hard to, um, put this together. So hopefully it'll be a success, and, um, we'll bring back reviews, um, for you guys at the next meeting. Um, so that is to conclude our general student trustee report.
Thank you, Chloe, Joel, and Jason. We now move to our educational field trips that are, uh, on the page. A hundred, a hundred. If anyone has any questions with Superintendent Supriano, please feel free to ask. Seeing none, we move on to our special appointment of student trustees. Superintendent McGillicuddy.
Through you, Madam Chair. It's, uh, my pleasure to prevent, present the information report on the appointment of student trustees for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. On Wednesday, April twenty second, the election of the student trustees for the two fifteen, two sixteen school year took place at St. Thomas Aquinas. Each secondary school submitted the name of a candidate, all of whom were excellent caliber and demonstrated a strong commitment to their communities, their parish, and their schools. Um, at that time, they had an opportunity to speak to the, the senators who were assembled in order to elect the successful candidates. Um, I will, uh, point out that it was a hotly contested election. In fact, in the case of one of the individuals, it required two tiebreakers. So just to give you some idea of how, uh, strong the candidate field was, and so our successful candidates are certainly to be congratulated, uh, on their achievement. So this time, I'm going to, um, announce each of the candidates for the different regions. Um, for Burlington, a grade eleven student at Corpus Christi, Jackson Brown. For North Halton, a grade eleven student at Bishop Reading, Chloe Comani. And for Oakville, currently a grade ten student at St. Thomas Aquinas, Manuela Zapata. Madam Chair, this time I'll yield the floor if you have any comments.
...in a, a hotly contested race by the sounds of it, and, uh, got a hard act to follow here. I wish you well, and I'm sure everyone will help you as much as they can. We started tonight, and just keep the questions flowing, keep your communication open, and I'm sure you'll do fantastically. Congratulations. We would understand if you would like to leave now. And if we could welcome to the floor Director Dawson for our strategic plan update with Dr. Erica.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just to beg your indulgence this evening, trustees, this report in your package, uh, is what we discussed when we outlined the strategic plan, that we'd give you an update at every juncture, at every phase. We are, um, we are actually in between two phases, and tonight we, we hope to move into phase three. Uh, our consultant, Ian Smith, was unable to be with us this evening but has sent, um, these slides which are now at your, at your place. You have copies of, of them. I would like to go through the report first, uh, that you have, and then we'll move to the slides. Um, you also have another piece of information at your place, which is a summary of what you discussed at the April twenty second meeting when it came to strategic planning. These are the notes that were taken by Ian and Jessica, and the feedback that you were providing as he went through the, um, the strategic plan and the outcomes. So, uh, what we're going to do tonight, I just wanted to review that we met on April fourteenth with an orientation session, uh, for trustees and senior staff. Then on April twenty second, we had a three-hour session with Dr. Erica, Superintendent Nar, and Lisa Stocco from Communications. And that was to get a feel for what was to be stopped, started, continued through our, our previous strategic plan. And trustees gave some information about who we should consult in a general way. And tonight, Dr. Erica and I would like to, um, formalize and actually, uh, come to an agreement around the table with the questions and the consultation of, uh, who you actually want to, uh, consult with.
So we haven't seen this, so...
No. This was just sent today from, from the consultant. So we're just, we're just gonna walk you through it. And it's nothing that you haven't seen already in terms of who you identified as stakeholders. We just want to actually group them and come up with some questions that you want to ask. So tonight, we wanna confirm the stakeholder groups you'd like to consult with. We'd like to find out what composition of these stakeholder groups, identify, uh, how we will facilitate these teams that will consult, um, what would be the approach that we will take for each stakeholder group, and then discuss the questions to be used. Okay?
Well, we're gonna confirm these tonight?
Yes.
Without having the chance to prepare?
Well, we can have a, we can have a discussion, and this is why we brought it here, because trustees wanted, wanted to be deciding who wanted, who would be consulted. So from the previous meeting on April twenty second, you identified these areas. Parents, priests, ratepayers, seniors, school staff, community partners, students, school administrators, central office staff, and senior staff. These are the ones that you mentioned at the April twenty second meeting. We are looking at how do we cluster these potential stakeholder groups so that, um, we can make the best use of our teams that go out, our, our trustees and, and staff that would be working together to go out and do these stakeholder groups. So we've looked at clustering parents, parish priests, ratepayers, and seniors as a group. Um, school staff would be a second group. Um, community partners, we have a little note there that we'd ask, do the trustees want to determine if the board wanna interview individual employers, or do we wanna use the local chamber as a proxy for employers or business?
So on the first one, I don't, I don't call parish priests, I don't call parish members.
Parishes. Okay. So we can do that. We can put priest and parish, uh, parish members. Right. Okay, we'll adjust that. Is there anything from our meeting that we're missing here?
And does it make sense to cluster them where they are or other configurations?
Yeah, it's not, it's not missing, yeah. But, but, um, maybe you also wanna talk to, uh, alumni or recent alumni in the past couple of years. Students, under students, students alumni. So, and you can decide the number of years you wanna go back.
Um, for employers, I'm wondering if we might speak to employers that are offering cooperative placements in, in apprenticeship?
And we did talk about Hyatt as well.
And Hyatt, yeah.
Halton Industrial Education Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Director, can you, um, clarify for me, please, just how is this process going to follow? Because I must have missed that somewhere along the line. Are we sending out these, um, consultation groups to meet with these individual groups? Or is it going through a survey?
We need to decide that. That's part of this process.
That's coming.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm ahead.
The next consultation's made anyway. You can decide on later.
Right. Okay, so, anything else on who the stakeholders should be?
Again, um, I don't, I don't, I don't, it's a lot of margin, it's a lot of, it's difficult to say. We had ten of us, it's a little bit, you know, we're a minority, but it's, I wasn't prepared for this part of the...
Okay. So here, here are the stakeholder groups again, and you had mentioned various ways to approach the consultations through town hall face-to-face, telephone town hall. I think Trustee Marai mentioned that, and we've investigated, uh, that option, and that is doable. Uh, focus, a focus group, an interview, or a survey. So your, your input tonight on how do you think we should consult with those stakeholder groups, some input from you, is what we're looking for in this particular exercise.
And it could be a combination. And we also need to consider that we want to do some of these pieces, whether it's a one-time out, or whether we need two, or three, or four, depending on the approach.
Through you, Madam Chair. Do we have a budget for this, uh, set? So we know if we had forty thousand dollars, we would spend ten thousand on printing and thirty thousand on telephone town halls. What, what are we looking at by way of spending?
Through you, Madam Chair. I had put aside, as you know, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for this whole, uh, procedure of strategic planning. Our, our consultant came out with fifteen, is fifteen thousand dollars. So we have ten thousand dollars left to spend. Um, pre, early investigation into the telephone town hall is approximately twelve hundred dollars, where, um, a company actually helps queue and take questions from, uh, from people who call in. So that would, that's about what the cost. So we're down to, you know, eight thousand now left over. And we would also have to develop resources for any trustees and senior staff who go out to do these consultations, packages for them, printing, so that they can be prepared when they, when they do these consultations. It's, it's slim.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I was very interested when I heard you talking about the telephone, um, town halls, and you said that the, there would be facilitator that would, would do everything, basically. Yes? Um, Trustee Danko.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to see the suggestions that come up in this discussion come back to the next meeting as an action item where we vote on. Instead of simply going around for some kind of a vague consensus as to what we're going to do, um, and then, uh, you know, the outcome is something different than what we discussed, or the spirit of we didn't all agree on some things. So I would like to see some notes being taken at the suggestions being made now, and that at the next meeting on May nineteenth, it comes forward as an action item that we can discuss, debate, amend, and all agree on with a vote.
Just for clarification, can't we do that tonight? I don't mean as an action item, but can't we discuss and move forward with the discussion tonight? Thoughts? Trustee Quinn?
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I agree with Mr. Danko, Trustee Danko, and that may, uh, better describe my experience or my feeling about this process being put on us now and then being expected to make the decision for how we will consult without preparation. So if we could have a frank discussion this evening, have it come back to us as an action item. I would support that.
With all due respect, though, it was in the package. Didn't we know it was coming? You told me. Ah. Ah.
Yes, Trustee Marai.
Just a, just a comment, like I, I, I'm open for a longer timeline on this if we all wanna agree and just make sure all the ideas come out. Just wanna make sure that is that, does it fit into the timeline of our, of the overall strategic plan? Will we still be on track if we then vote on this and collect all the ideas for next meeting?
Paula, can you explain, um, what you explained to me that I was unclear on, that we can delay it till whenever, but we can only launch it at the beginning of the school year?
Sure. I, I think I'll, I'll answer it in two ways. Um, I'm not ch, perhaps, I'm not E, I'm not Ian Smith and I'm not the consultant who normally would've been here tonight doing, facilitating this very same thing, presenting an information report that I did and walking you through the same thing. So, um, it would've been the consultant instead of Erica and I to start with. And, uh, secondly, by waiting, I, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with waiting till the neck, taking notes and waiting till May nineteenth. Um, that just means that it's delaying your, uh, public consultation process because then it's, we have to get together and develop all the resources and book all the places and do all the things that need to happen for, for the consultation in June. Otherwise, trustees can decide, if they want, to, uh, not do consultations this school year and let June, and, and let June run its course and begin the consultation process in September when you'll have, uh, people readily available to do this work. And we can stretch that out and have a strategic plan be finished around Christmas time with a launch or an awareness in the spring for a full launch where everything takes place in the year September twenty sixteen. And then you could align all of the budget and all the operational plans to your strategic plan if it was ready in January or February for that purpose. So, I, I'm, it's, it's at the will of the board. I'm happy to do whatever is required.
Trustee Rabenda, then Trustee Marai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think that, um, the proposal that the director is putting forward is a good one because we're talking about going out to groups in June. June's a very busy month for everybody. You're into the summer months and, and families just don't want to know. They want to have their summer with their families. So, it would make more logic, uh, to me if we got ourselves organized with what we're going to do and then do it in September, September, October, as we have done before with some of our consultation sessions. The current strategic plan goes until December. So, we are still in keeping, we're not without a strategic plan. And the process of starting to introduce it in January would be part of the new strategic plan. So, it's not that we have any gaps anywhere, um, because even if we get all these groups that we're talking about tonight, I just don't see how it can all get done properly and in time, uh, for September. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Marai.
Does, uh, does that affect the cost of the, the consultants, the, the timeline at all or?
They have to go back and, uh, go through purchasing to see what we can do to, you know, he just, he wouldn't be involved, that involved, so we could push out his, his involvement into the next school year. I can, we can find out.
My, my suggestion was just gonna be move up if, you know, get, make sure we get our, all, our, all our input and then have a meeting before the policy meeting to come back next week, to come back. But I, I'm open to what Diane said about her timeline as well and what, uh, the director said, so.
Paul, are you, when are you suggesting a meeting?
Well, just coming back next week right before policy and then having it all, having a society there, uh, if we don't wanna slow down the process. But I'm open to, to either option. Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would think that the, um, enthusiasm, um, of the, of the groups for our plan would be better in the fall, would be, would be heightened in the fall rather than, than in June. And, um, I think we would get much more input if we waited till September, um, rather than, uh, than, than doing something in June. So, I would, I would agree to push it off.
Any other comments on the timing?
I, just, just, um, a caveat, a note. We could be into job action in the fall. Um, doesn't mean you can't go and consult with your parents and parishes and, uh, community partners, um, and central office staff, but that, that could be one group that you wouldn't get depending on where we're at. So, let's hope and pray that there isn't that happening in the fall.
Trustee Rabenda.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. In response to the director, uh, that is a very real possibility, but at the same time, if they're angry now, they're gonna be angry in the fall. So, whichever way you look at it, you could end up with, um, that kind of response from some people, but not from all.
We, we're at the point where we're deciding what we're gonna do and come up with the questions, which, which we can continue to do. So, so couldn't the staff part of, of the consultation, uh, roll out during June?
We can do that. We, we'll have to, the next slide, if, if you don't mind, if, if we could push on and we can take, uh, Trustee Danko and take notes and bring it back on May nineteenth for the, for the consultation. But here are some of the questions that we thought and the, and Ian thought you would wanna go out with. And you'd asked this of all the, of the groups. So, you get the information back that you can compare across the groups. And I'm not sure if Dr. Erica wants to say anything about these. Um, the first couple, uh, we, we had a long discussion, if you remember, on April twenty-second about the existing vision, mission, goals, values, and, um, the notes are there. You have them in front of you, what, what you said. Um, there, there could be cost changes that you make, but this is, if these are the proposed questions that you wanted to go out, we, you can review them and come back on, on May nineteenth and, um, we can, we can look at that. So, I leave them up to you, Madam Chair. If anybody has any questions or, do you have any comments, Doctor?
Uh, just the intention would be that we would ask the same types of questions regardless of what the format was to all the stakeholders. We'd need to tweak them obviously a little so that we use the language that's appropriate for each of those stakeholder groups. But the idea would be that we would ask the same questions, get the same type of information from the different perspectives. Um, if we go down a survey route, the questions may be a little bit different and we certainly did that the last time with our parent group, we did well with the survey. Um, and those questions were a little bit different. These would be embedded within it, but it's an opportunity when you're, uh, with your parents to, to hear, um, from them in that particular way. Um, again, as, as Paula's mentioned, part of it is the thinking, are we consulting around the vision and the mission as well as the goals and objectives and priorities? Do we wanna do that core package or do we wanna narrow the focus around, um, strategic priorities, goals and objectives in that sort of thing as well?
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think I'd agree with the latter part of your, your statement there saying that we want to narrow, narrow it. Uh, asking about the, the language of the vision, mission, and goals, we, we're having enough trouble discussing the words around the table. And I think we've agreed that the last strategic plan was a pretty good thing that we're gonna, we're going to look at maybe slightly tweaking in the next version. But for questions, uh, two, three, four, five, and six, you don't need to read the entire previous strategic plan to get those answers or have an opinion on them. And I think they would apply to all of our, our stakeholder groups. So, maybe, my, my thought might be to limit the questions and not make them study before they give us their responses.
Any other comments? None? Trustee Rowe.
I would agree with that. I think that's, uh, as I say, the mission and the vision seems to be, we're fairly consistent with that and it seems to be serving us well, so.
So, questions three, two, six are probably more the, the area of focus that you'd, you'd go out with. Okay, we'll, we'll bring that suggestion back.
So, I'm just wondering, do we wanna have a conversation around possibilities of the different types of formats, uh, today or do you wanna bring that back? So, what we suggested is there's, uh, what came from our meeting prior was we could do surveys and then who we may wanna do surveys with. Um, we could do, uh, town halls, face-to-face meetings, or through the, the telephone system. Are there groups that you think focus groups may be more practical, meaningful way to gather information or the one-on-one interview?
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. In my, in my, uh, career outside of polit, politics, um, the, the town hall face-to-face seems to be the least effective, uh, method in, in my experience because you get, I think we mentioned it in the last meeting, you get the same people giving you the same advice. And with the new technology of telephone town hall and online surveys, we can reach a broader audience and get answers back in their own, in their own timeframe. Uh, I think even with the tele, telephone town hall, people can call in to listen to the conversation as a possibility and then, and then respond back afterwards. Uh, focus groups, the facilitator mentioned the importance of focus groups, so I think that's something that's easy to time and we can do it, uh, either through a facilitator or through the trustees. And, uh, and through, through your offices, find representative people in those focus groups from those constituents we talked about. One-on-one interviews, I, I like to give my opinion, but so does everyone, but that's not gonna be representative enough, I don't think, for us to get, uh, to get a fullsome reply on what we're looking to hear for the strategic plan. So, uh, when we talk about town halls, again, uh, I think going into the parishes is, is a version of that. And it's a cross-section of students and parents and seniors and, and ratepayers. So, I think if we could focus on places where they're already meeting and then use the technology. Just wanted to make comments.
Here is, um, who will be conducting the consultations. And just to give you a bit of a background, um, when we went through the process before, um, for example, when we were working with the school administrators, that was done through the family-to-school meetings with the family-to-school superintendents leading those discussions. Um, and again, whether or not trustees want to be there or actually lead that discussion, that of course is up to you, but that's when we had done that one. Uh, the parents, we had actually done a survey out to the system. Um, school staff, then those sessions were done with the, at the schools, um, meetings with their, their school principals and whatnot. And again, that's an option or pulling them together in other formats. So, it's something just to think about as well.
We could do staff online as well if you want.
Yep. If you wanna do a survey.
Absolutely. That way then we know, sort of, state your own opinions in part of the presentation.
True. Anonymous.
Anonymous.
Yeah.
If, if local teachers, you know, the staff. But, you get, that, that one's a, that's a, a service.
Trustee Rowe.
And, and for like a, a focus group, um, this, if we do it in the fall, it'll give us time if we could ask the CWLs and the Knights of Columbus if, if they had it representative they could send to a meeting at a certain day and, um, maybe the municipal council or, uh, these kind of, uh, these pe, people here that you have under community partners, um, so that, you know, we have a representative from these different areas that are at least invited. And then we can sit around and, and do the, the focus group, um, by municipality or, or whatever arrangement works best.
Paul?
Just one comment on the, um, I agree with, with the comments made, uh, on the town hall itself. So, I don't know if the consensus moving towards we're a longer timeframe for this and if we're going to the fall. Um, we, I, I think, I think it's important that we have in-person town halls. I think how we can advertise them is, you know, up to, up to discussion. But I think having them at specific schools is helpful when you move them around and you actually ha, have yourselves available to parents in person. Um, and maybe working with schedules that can improve the attendance of different groups. Um, I would also say though, if we move this to the fall, I wanna comment that we have a, we have a motion on the books that was made where we are supposed to have a ta, a town hall every year and we haven't had one in over a year, uh, by this time. So, we're, we're supposed to have one this spring and I expect that, that, um, staff are planning for that, um, as, as the past two years ago, I think.
You can use this ver, you can use this version. We can do a town hall now with a particular group if you'd like. Um, when, when, what we've learned from our public consultation training, five days, I know Superintendent, uh, McGill, Akadi, our two communications people and, uh, Trustee Rowe, to go out and, and do a town hall, we have to have a purpose and we have to have, uh, set questions. It's, um, that's, that's what we understood as being a town hall. If, if it's going out just to get a state of what people are feeling, that, that's fine, but then you have to say what, what is the purpose of the town hall to get people to come out? And what are we gonna do with the feedback that we get from parents? And if it's for this purpose, if it's for your strategic plan, we can, we can do one now with one of the groups that you, you wanna choose.
Fair enough. And that's well taken, that it needs to be like a specific question, specific questions or to, a to specific issue. But, so I'm saying, I have no problem if you wanna, you know, work around at tele-town hall, focus group, interview, surveys for the fall. But either way, we're required to have one this spring. And my suggestion would be we work it into the budget discussions and have it based around budget to both inform constituents, uh, around our, our own and, uh, go in that perspective. But we're required to have one in every municipality, uh, this spring. So, uh, no, no problem. We can work out what's the best use for the fall, but I, I, I'm confirming that we're having one this spring, for three, three this spring, actually.
Could that be a spring meeting before the end of the school year?
Yeah. And may I just say, when we're looking at collecting the information for the strategic planning purposes, you wanna make sure that we collect it within the same relative timeframe regardless of what the method is. Life happens in between events and you don't want that biasing the results that you collect that you'd like to collect it in a relatively same time period, um, so that you get, um, reliability of your data.
Okay. Does anybody want to move anything? Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. To Trustee Marai, then if you could perhaps make a motion to, to ensure that we, we follow our by, our own, our own procedures and bylaws and have those town halls and include strategic planning and budget consultation into those before the end of the school year, I think that'd be great if we could do that.
Uh, and I appreciate, and I appreciate the question. It's already on the books. We have to do it. Like this is not a, it's not a, this is not, you, we can make a motion to get rid of this, but this has somehow been missed or, you know, because of the election year or something like that. We had one last spring, it's been a year. So, I understand that it's good to get clarity on it. Uh, so I, I'm happy to clarify what was passed with, you know, new trustees and make sure it works with you and if we wanna tweak anything, I think that's only positive. Um, but my understanding is that's already been done. Um, and I think going forward, I think it's good that we have a discussion on what we're gonna be doing in the fall for the strategic, uh, consultation. But, and just to clarify, the subject of these town halls, you know, it was fairly o, it was fairly open-ended. I know there was a motion at the time to try to connect it directly with the strategic planning process. It failed, uh, two, two years ago even though it had a sign, you know, a minority support. Um, but I think the idea was is that before the town halls were done every year, the trustees would informally come together and say, these are the issues or questions we'd like. And that's what I propose again, uh, as, as is the history, to do for this spring one. And, you know, I'd also support, uh, if you want to, um, make that a bit more clear and have it tied directly into the strategic planning process or the budget process. So, I, I think it's maybe, uh, I think it's strengthening that motion, but maybe it's as we do the strategic plan. That's my thought.
I think because we, my opinion, because we have to have it and we have to have it soon by policy, um, wouldn't it be in our best interest to tie it to the strategic plan? Uh, we have Arlene and then Anthony Danko and we, Susan, sorry, I didn't see your hand. You go.
Okay. No, I forgot what I was going to ask. Uh, just for clarification, I like the town hall idea. I'd like to see it linked to strategic planning if we could. But what I'd like clarification, if we're doing the majority of the groups by survey, how long logistically does that take for you to put something like that together and get it out there and get a return on? Are we talking a month? We talking two weeks? We talking three months? Because I'm just, I'm just thinking if we're talking about extending the whole thing, that's fine, but then if you're talking- that's fine, but then if you're talking about trying to keep all your answers around the same time, then I'm thinking, if it doesn't take that long to put the surveys together, why can't they go out at the same time, basically, we're having town halls, and then we've got all kinds of information over the summer that we've got to work with going into the fall? Just a thought.
Two, two of the lengthy processes around the survey would be coming up with the questions, so if these were the questions that our trust, trustees wanted to go with, that that's part of the battle, if we wanted to look at the questions for a survey format versus a face-to-face format, it'd take some time in terms of developing those questions to make sure that they are reliable and valid questions, that can be done. If the questions are open-ended, where you're going to get a lot of script back, that is a lengthy process for analyzing the data, versus if they are closed-ended with some types of scaling types of responses, or box responses with names and, and things like that with nominal data.
Okay, so we have Anthony and Susan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, wouldn't the, maybe I missed it, but, wouldn't, wouldn't the wish list that we just saw in the new initiatives for the budget form the basis of the consultations? Because those are strategic directions, things we're doing new, maybe some of them are only, uh, incidental things that may not be part of the strategy, but I would think that those, uh, are the things the superintendents would ask us for if we had the, uh, consultation, uh, budget meeting.
Paula.
Um, I like your, I like your thinking, Trustee Danko, and I think, um, if we came back to the board and on the nineteenth, and had a series of budgetary questions that trustees could go out with town hall, to say, here's some of the things we're thinking about, um, with, trustees can look at those questions and see if that would be a good idea to do a town hall on.
Through you, Madam Chair. Can I just clarify, Paul, it's one town hall that we have to have in the spring?
We know we made it very specific, so we did one town hall per region.
Oh, okay, so we have to have three or four? Three.
There's supposed to be three, yeah, there's supposed to be three in, in the north, in Oakville, and, and, uh, Burlington, West Howard stuff.
Thank you, great. Um, and I'm just wondering if we did do a strategic plan, or any portion of it, in the three that we're going to have by June twenty fifteen, would it not go back, and I think you mentioned it, Arlene, about the timeline, are we keeping it, you know, sort of tight? But I would also suggest that I think planning our town halls around a budget, and ties in with po- policy, I think it could be very timely, open above our strategic plan. I think it would be a good message to listen to our constituents, maybe get an understanding of what they understand about what our budgets are, what our constraints are, what we realistically can do, what we cannot do.
Okay, we seem to have some direction here, then. Yes?
Madam Chair, I would hope, uh, that this would be brought back as an action item in two weeks, uh, the stuff that we discussed, uh, something that we vote on together.
Okay, so moved. Seconder, Susan? And all in favor? Um, yay. A, I.
Thank you for your indulgence, trustees.
Susan.
No, I was just wondering, picking up on what Paul said, again, great ideas, would we consider maybe, prior to the nineteenth action items, do we need to get together maybe an hour, an hour and a half before our prior, our, um, policy meeting next week and carry on, or?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the town halls?
No, I'm talking about the strategic plan and the paperwork that we were just given tonight. Would there be a need for that, or? I would be in if there was a need, that's all I'm throwing out there.
I'm, I'm not clear myself, maybe I'm not hearing right.
We may need a little, we may need a, a little more time, staff might need another few days, past Tuesday of next week, for policy to, to bring this back, and I'm pretty sure we couldn't turn it around for next Tuesday.
I think I was speaking more to, as a board, do we need to get together, or have we discussed everything we wanted tonight, and we're going to see an action item in two weeks?
Have a question.
Through you, Madam Chair, I, I know I'm going to leave here tonight and have some great questions, so perhaps, uh, the director could indulge us to say by, by next Monday for us to have for- formulated some more questions to add to this, and, uh, maybe that could be included in the action item, if we have some, some ideas between now and, and a few days from now.
Through you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Ciprianos's policy's kind of light, so, um, maybe we can do a little more discussing, and I, I don't think we can turn questions around pertaining to budget in a, in a week, but, uh, we'll see what we can do.
That sounds great, we can do that, is that good for everyone else? All right. Moving on, Dr. Brown, and mental health and addiction strategy, and Patricia.
Trustees, for giving us this opportunity to speak about the mental health, uh, strategy, give you an update on where we are, um, it was here. Um, we, this is Mental Health Awareness Week, and what I've just passed around to you, just to start off our, our little chat about mental health, is that, um, this is Mental Health Awareness Week, it's also, as we all know, Catholic Education Week, and that, it continues to be always falling at the same time, and what we've passed around for you, just to take a quick look at, is some of the work that our Mental Health Committee has done to, um, bring the two, uh, celebrations that we have throughout the week, raising awareness of, of mental health, uh, here in Halton, and, um, Catholic Education Week together. So, we created this package that went out to all schools, a letter that goes out to the school communities, talking about Mental Health Week, and you notice that there are daily announcements and reflections in there that are tied to scripture, that are focused on anxiety, um, and, and taking a look at some of the different issues that we recognize in our board scan to be talking about throughout the week, and also as well as lesson plans that are in there as well, that are all very intentionally, um, amalgamate both, um, Mental Health Week, and fits in really nicely with our Catholic Education Week theme as well. So, I just share that with you, you can feel free to peruse that at your leisure. Um, you do have the information report that was in your package, that just gives a little bit of a highlight of where we are at with our mental health strategy, and what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to walk you through some slides, because I've been chatting with a lot of you, and I know that you get a lot of questions about, uh, mental health, uh, about these strategies that we have placed, in place on the board, and what we're doing to support students from a mental health perspective. I also rec- recognize, as I'm sure you do too, how mental health continues to be on the radar, increasingly so, uh, and we want to continue to do our best to support our students with their various, uh, mental health needs, and I'm going to talk about what that looks like here in our board. So... Oh, there we go, okay. Um, so, just what mental health is, it's, it's, we like to, it's a state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being, and it's really not merely the absence of disease or infirmity, so that's the World Health Organization's, uh, definition, and we include that, and we, we, just to give a, a sense, is that we all have, mental health exists on a continuum, we all have, uh, that, really, that state of, of flow of mental health, and we all have issues along the way, levels of anxiety, emotional problems, concerns, things that happen in our lives that cause and create anxiety, and then when we get to the end of that continuum, that's when we get into a really marked distress and, and can be disabling. So, uh, we recognize that we all have our own issues, but, um, we really want to be focusing on supporting students in all parts of the continuum, uh, and making sure that we are looking at being as mentally healthy as possible. This is what, I included this slide because I thought you'd be interested, we always like to ground everything that we're doing in data, we, we've worked very closely with Dr. Van Rusmelin and her team in the research department, to be taking a look at, um, what are the needs in Halton, and when, when we find out what those needs are, which we have done through our, our mapping and our, um, our consultation with our community, also what are the research-based strategies that best help to support, uh, those needs? So, in Halton, this is the, the, the data that we have, that bullying, concerns, uh, were, were the, the third concern that came up most when we were doing our, our data mapping and our board scan. Social relationships, or appropriate social relationships with students was a concern. Overwhelmingly, anxiety with our students remains the biggest concern amongst our students here in Halton. Uh, anxiety is, is something that tracks across the province, as for students being the, the, the greatest need, and here in Halton, our levels of, of reported anxiety are higher than the provincial average. So, that's a, it becomes a big focus of our work in mental health. So, for the purposes of, of, uh, clarifying language, and, uh, really providing you with some tools to be talking about, what are we doing as a board, if you walk away from this evening and think about, uh, the mental health presentation, I'll, if you can just keep these three words in mind, that'll be helpful along the way, talk, learn, support. So, that's what our, our focus is here with our mental health strategy in our board, talk, learn, support. We want to talk about mental health, that means we want to continue the conversation, raise awareness, and reduce stigma. We want to learn about mental health, so we want to learn, uh, about what are the, what are the signs of mental health, how can we help, how can we provide, uh, access and timely supports, and learning from one another, and support is that we want to be able to, uh, allow, make sure that our students have access to the appropriate supports that will meet their mental health needs in as timely a manner as possible. We're very intentional about our language, when we, when we use the word talk, learn, support, we're, we are not saying educate, empower, you know, w- we are not pretending that we are, we know everything, and we are going to impart our wisdom on others about mental health, we're, talking is a dialectical process, we want to engage in conversations, and it's a humble stance to take, in that we realize we don't know everything, but we want to continue the conversation with students, we want students to feel like they can talk, they can come forward and have these conversations. We use the word learn very intentionally, um, we, we, we want to learn from our families, we want to learn from our students, we want to learn more about what is, uh, mental health, and what is positive mental health, and we want them to learn from us, it's a reciprocal relationship, and we want to be able to support our students, to make sure that we are providing them with the support they need at whatever tier intervention they need. So, and we'll talk about the tiered model in a second, so talk, learn, support. So, talk, like I said, is reducing stigma, continuing the conversation, so, um, we are, this is just some talking points, but basically, we want to continue the conversation, we want to make sure that mental health continues to be on our radar in our schools, that students feel comfortable talking about it, that we are reducing the idea that there is something to be ashamed of when it comes to, uh, mental health, so that we can get people to come forward to be able to share, we can provide the support that we need, which we think is very, very important. We do think that when we use the term learn, it's a growth mindset, because it's a recognition that, uh, we know, we think we have amazing staff, we have incredible, uh, social work team, and, and child and youth counselors led by our mental health lead, Patricia Codner, our chief social, uh, our chief social worker Patricia Codner, our mental health lead Patricia Weber Callahan, uh, tremendous expertise and experience, and we don't know everything, that, that we want to learn together, and we'll try to provide as much sup- uh, as we can, and we're committed to learning together, we want to grow in our understanding of what it means to be positively, have a positive mental health. So, that learning really comes from, and this is some of the things that are happening in our system, um, we use the Supporting Minds document, we, we, uh, doing inservicing with our, uh, staff on anxiety, which, as I identified, was a, was a main need in our school, we've been looking at Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training, which is also part of the provincial strategy, to be providing support for, um, staff so they can intervene with students and be able to provide them appropriate support. Safe Talk, with, uh, two staff members from every school on the board have now been trained in Safe Talk, and that is, again, within their scope of practice as teachers and child and youth counselors, understanding how to use the appropriate language and engage in conversations with students, to be able to support them in their mental health needs. PALS is a playground, uh, activity, uh, program for students, research-based program that improves student engagement, uh, the Roots of Empathy Program, Friends for Life, Cameron Helps, and we do have a run happening this weekend in support of Cameron Helps, our Mother's Day Run, uh, happening on Saturday, that we're doing in partnership with our district partners. Positive Asset Building, Christian Meditation, some of the ways in which we've been learning together, and we've been learning this year about, uh, ways in which we can support students. When I reference support, uh, sometimes you'll hear us talk about the tiered approach to intervention, and it's the same in an academic capacity as well, there's three tiers, uh, tier one, tier two, and tier three. At tier one, really, it's kind of that, the idea of essential for some, good for all, good practices that are, that are student-focused, that, um, that are whole-school, whole-class focused, that we do make an impact on, on students' mental health and, and anxiety, but they are really, um, about whole-school approaches, and a lot of our students, most of our students, actually, the research would say about eighty percent of our students, fit into that tier one model, so we're intentional in our ways that we support students of the tier one model. Uh, tier two model, there's some more, those students that, at the tier one level, require a little bit act- additional support, those can be small groups, th- those can be works with our community partners, um, access to psychological assessments, and you've got some of the, our, our partners, the mental health nurses, uh, Woodview, uh, some of our community partners, and tier three is really the smallest percentage of our students that, when we really get to, to the level of perhaps Section Twenty-three classes, uh, supervised alternative fl- uh, classes, the Change and New Hope program, so the smallest percentage, and that's why it's, it's a triangle, because the least number of students end up getting to tier three, and the goal really is to provide them with the appropriate support at the lowest level possible, so we can best meet their needs. Um, and, supporting our students is the different ways in which, these are some of our community partners, and, you know, as we put in there, um, you know, working with McMaster, and Rock, and Woodview, and the Children's, uh, Care Access Center, and Adapt, and Halton Healthcare, parents and families are a really important part of that process as well, and we include them as, as our partners in our community. I already showed you the slide, so, in, into the future, we are, um, con- continuing to, this is Mental Health Week, um, this is some of where we're going, uh, moving forward, some of the work that we're continuing to do at FASTD, uh, Patricia Codner is taking the real lead on, uh, FASTD, FASTD is Fetal Alcohol Syndrome Disorder, which is becoming, uh, certainly on the provincial radar, very much so, in ways in which we are taking the lead in, in the, uh, community here in Halton, and around the province for FASTD, so some of the ways in which we are moving forward with mental health, we're very excited about what we're doing, we think that, uh, we have a thoughtful approach to supporting students with mental health, it's based on what the evidence tells us, we're using ea- a research and evidence-based programs to support our students, and we're monitoring along the way, and next year, we get back into the year two of the, will be into the Tell Them From Me, uh, survey again, be getting feedback, and, uh, again, we continue to work with Dr. Van Rusmelin in evaluating our programs and their effectiveness, and, uh, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have, as well as our mental health lead, Patricia Weber Callahan, or our chief social worker, Patricia Codner.
Thank you, Brendan, and Patricia, uh, we have Helena and Joel.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, I just had a quick look at the curriculum outline, who made this curriculum?
So, we have a, a mental health leadership, um, team, and that consists of, uh, community members, uh, parents, students, we have students from, um, our high schools, we have principals, vice-principals, and teachers from around the board, and we meet, uh, regularly, and we started working on that back in, in the fall, and the idea was to be able to provide schools with, uh, at the very least, and at a glance, daily, on-the-radar, talk about mental health, but really from a faith perspective, because we're in Catholic Education Week. Um, and, by also providing some, uh, activities and, and classwork, we're giving teachers our resources, so that they can bring some of these ideas into their classroom and explore that on their, on their own. We're very proud of the work that we do with our leadership committee, we do think that we do have a cross-section, fairly significant cross-section of our, our, our community, from parents to students to administrators and teachers.
Well, we, as part of, as a part of the curriculum, I'm sure that, uh, the Catholic leadership, as well as the Catholic authority.
Um, well, first of all, thank you for paying so much attention to mental health, as I do feel, um, it's such a strong issue nowadays with students, um, but what I wanted to ask was, with the mental health team, um, how are we seeing a student voice, um, on the actual team itself, or is that possible, if it's not already there? Um, I think having students, us having a say in this, um, curriculum would definitely help.
As, as I mentioned, Joel, we have students on our mental health leadership team, uh, students, the...
Yes, we have four students on our mental health leadership team, uh, one's from Corpus, one is from Loyola, one is from Christ's The King, and I believe the...
One's from Corpus, one is from Loyola, one is from Christ the King, and I believe the Corpus of Notre Dame. And when the, when the mental health leadership team got together to work through the curriculum for Catholic Education Week, two of our students were part of that asset committee. So they were very, there were two students, they are vice principals and principals, who worked together to put together the curriculum. So they were very instrumental and very active in participating and putting the curriculum together in terms of choosing programs that they thought made sense for this year.
And we would agree with you, that student voice is essential. And we are very thankful for the students who are willing to volunteer their time and be with us and make this a priority.
And they come every month. They come every month. And if they aren't able to be there in person, they participate back home or send in their questions.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, why are we seeing an increase in these issues? It can't just be awareness. There must be some other factors in Canada and North American society. What is the theory behind why we're seeing these increases in the needs to support these students? And secondarily, is our budget following the needs of these new mental health sports that we're putting through?
I want to try to answer, because I think that you can't be as dismissive as awareness, that it can't just be awareness, because I do want to speak to that to some degree. I don't know that I could say definitively that there is necessarily more incidents per se than there was 15, 20 years ago. I do think that awareness is playing a tremendous role in that. Part of the work that we're doing, a part of, you know, with Mental Health Awareness Week, is about raising awareness and reducing stigma. Because there definitely has traditionally been a sense of shame, of not wanting to come forward to talk about mental health. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to really diminish that. We're trying to give students their voice so that, and also with society as well at large, to reduce the idea that there's something to be embarrassed about when they were suffering from mental illness. I think it's working to a large extent. I think that a lot of the work that's being done is making it more inviting and people feel more comfortable to go, come forward and say, "I'm struggling, and I want to, I want to find a way to get some more help." So I think that as we are more successful in our mental health strategy, I think more students will continue to emerge as being students that we need to support. And a lot of the students we can support, as I was mentioning, at that tier one level. You know, as we increase awareness with all staff around the board, not just specialized with our clinical and therapeutic staff, the teachers in the classroom, we can be meeting a lot of their needs at that tier one level. To answer your second question about budget, I am happy to say that, and Roxanne and Paul can flesh this out if you'd like, but the mental health budget that we've received is one of, it has been up until now, one of those EPOs that was envelopes that we had to spend it on mental health. And what the ministry did is they moved it into the GSM. And by doing that, that was really their commitment to be saying, "This is the long term. This isn't something that's going to go away. That we are committed to supporting mental health in boards over the long term." That funding that we get supports Patricia Weber Callahan's salary as our mental health lead and provides us with some funds to be able to help to pay for some of the training and the programs that we do at a board level and in schools. Do I think that the level of funding that we get is sufficient to what I think our needs are? No, I don't. We did best we can with what we have. And I think that we're doing really good things as we do.
Any other questions? Oh, Helena?
I just had a question about anger management skills. Is that included in mental health or theme curriculum?
Happy to talk with anybody anytime about what we're doing. So just send me a note. We can chat with Patricia, Patricia, who really are unbelievable leaders and experts in clinical therapeutic work that we're doing in our board. And as trustee Quinn notes, you know, it is becoming more and more prominent, and their work is so important as a result. So we're really blessed to have their leadership. And I think that the board and the system is really reaping the benefits.
The mathematics action plan.
Through you, Madam Chair. The mathematics action plan outlines the board's commitment and supporting actions to ensure that all students can be successful in mathematics. The action plan is provided for your review, and I'd just like to highlight some aspects of it. I tried to anticipate some of the questions you might have, so I handed out a green handout right from our Mathematics One Tate Curriculum Policy Document that actually describes what the four-step problem-solving model is, if you were wondering what that was. And I'd like to update you on a few of the initiatives that might be newer to you and the board. So the first I'll give you an update on are the Regional Parent Nights in Math. For the past three Thursdays, we've had these. The first one was at St. Catherine in Georgetown. Second was St. Anthony in Milton. And last week, it was at St. Christopher in Burlington. During these Regional Parent Nights, we give an overview of the Balanced Math Program in our board. So just to kind of tease that out a little bit for you, the Balanced Math Program builds skills and competencies in the basic facts and operational skills in math. It strengthens learning through purposeful practice, and it constructs understanding through problem solving. After that basic overview, we move into a discussion on mindset. And we are talking a lot about growth mindsets in math. And from the student's perspective, that means a feeling that the student can do math. From the teacher's perspective, I can teach math effectively. And from the parent's perspective, it really denotes that parents can help children do math. From that part of the evening, we go into problem-solving activities. So we've had anywhere from 35 to 50 parents attend each thus far. The last one happens at Our Lady of Peace on May 14th, and I would invite any trustees that are available that night to come and join us. Another new initiative in math this year is our Saturday Math Club. And for this particular initiative, we have three sites, St. Elizabeth Seaton in Burlington, St. Mary in Oakville, and Lumen Christie in Milton. We've had a total of 110 students each of the past two weeks on Thursday morning. It runs from 9:30 to noon. We have five teachers on site at each school, and we have students in different grade levels grouped together in quite small groups, getting assistance from our teachers. So we are hoping that that pays dividends. One more program that we are planning for the summer to address the summer learning gap is our Summer Learning Program. We have been awarded funding for six sites by the ministry for that Summer Learning Program, and we're hoping to have a good turnout for those six sites. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time on the Math Action Plan.
Jack, I just want to say I was really astonished when I started seeing your tweets about the Saturday Morning Math Club. I can't believe the participation you're getting. And I think kudos to everybody that comes out on Saturday morning to teach and learn math. It's great. Berlín?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Now, Jack, I'm just wondering, have you, or staff, had an opportunity to speak to parents after these nights, and what kind of feedback they're getting? Because I think they're fabulous, because, you know, the town halls, that's all we heard about was math. So it's great that you're doing this.
It's not 24/7 here, really. Through you, Madam Chair. It's, well, the reports have been around so much enthusiasm at those nights. And people really appreciate the description of the Balanced Math Program. There are some misconceptions that in Ontario, we don't teach basic skills. And we do, we really do. But it is balanced with the problem-solving aspects of using those basic skills to really understand and solve math problems. So much enthusiasm. And we do, we plan those in consultation with our CPIC. We're so happy about the partnership, and I want to thank Superintendent Overhold for facilitating that. But very, very well-attended, very enthusiastic group, and we've been really pleased with them so far.
Trustee Rabenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack, you have some proposals listed in your report there, the items listed in red. Are they in the budget?
Everything is budgeted. Through you, Madam Chair, everything is budgeted for, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Congratulations on this. I know that parents are happy to see actual math plans noted in our agenda tonight. Have we done anything to encourage the ministry to change or update or make progress on the math curriculum in general? I know that the Hamilton Catholic Board has written to the ministry asking for changes to the curriculum. Does our board request or recommend any changes to the math curriculum?
Who's going to speak to that?
Through you, Madam Chair. We attend many sessions with our ministry colleagues on math teaching and math learning. We talk about our experiences in math and the continued need to deepen our competencies in teaching math. Until now, we have had no such kind of communication back and forth with the ministry that anything is in need of change. What we have asked the ministry to allow us to do is to, there's something that we talked about at the senior team table called Initiative Overload. And that is in the way of ministries communicating with us on a regular basis of something new that they want us to look at or try in our, in our math classrooms. And lately, we've been saying, "We're good on strategy. We want to, we want some time to broaden and deepen our practice among all schools and teachers at the board." So you've read about SIM as an example, where we have been working with 13 schools this year on both growth mindsets and effective teaching practice based on the Guide to Effective Instruction in Mathematics that we use. We've already communicated with the ministry that next year, we're going to continue to do that mindset work and expand that work to all 55 schools in the board.
Is that good? No other questions? Helena?
I don't really know how to ask this question, if it's going to cause some... But do we, how does our math curriculum compare to private school math curriculum?
I'm going to, through you, Madam Chair, I'm going to bring the lens of one of my previous jobs as a private school inspector for the ministry and the province. At the secondary level, private schools in Ontario that offer the Ontario diploma are obliged to use the curriculum policy documents of the province to deliver their math instruction. So the instruction that happens in private schools is based on the exact same curriculum as the curriculum in our secondary schools. At the elementary level, there is no requirement for private schools to use the Ontario curriculum. So my answer to you with respect to elementary schools is, it's variable from school to school. In private schools, you may or may not know that there is actually no requirement to have certified teachers teach in those schools. In my own experience of inspecting 85 secondary schools in this province and a few schools overseas that offer the Ontario diploma, I've seen a range of teaching practices. I know this is being recorded, so I can't, I can't go into too much detail. I will say that some schools that you might consider elite private schools leave things to be desired in terms of their teaching of math and other subjects in general. By the same token, there are some private schools that do an outstanding job. So I hope that answers your question. And I hesitate to say anything more because, sorry. Oh, the red light's on, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We've appointed the student trustees. Miscellaneous information you find attached to C F minutes of March 9th. Any questions with Superintendent Brown? Seeing none. Correspondence attached, Health and Physical Education Curriculum Stakeholders Letters. Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, is that list of correspondence, is that the cumulative list of correspondence received to date?
No, I think Paula can ask.
Through you, Madam Chair. This is attached to this particular letter. The ones that have come in previously, to previous board meetings were attached to those packages. So this happened to be all at one time.
How many, you told me how many letters?
108 total. This and previous.
Trustee Quinn.
Sorry, I didn't get that. Could you clarify that answer to Mr. Danko, to trustee Danko?
108 total over the last few board meetings that where correspondence has been attached. This particular tracking sheet that you have attached to correspondence was just, all came in the last week or so with that same letter. And I think there's 94, five.
So in total, over 200 letters from parents?
108.
108 total. So each individual name here from Arabit to...
Zolnerowski.
Zolnerowski, excuse me, have written individual letters, or these names were attached to a single letter?
Through you, Madam Chair. Those names were attached to the form letter.
So there are 80-odd names, 94 between these two. So we, in theory, have heard from 200-ish odd parents on this issue.
108. So there's 95 here, and previously, you know, my math, seven more that we had in previous board meetings.
Thank you.
Helena?
There is just two more letters that are not part of this form letter that I received through the email that was addressed to you. So those weren't in this package the last two weeks.
Okay, these are what I received through the, through the mail here. And if you want to send them on, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
On that issue, through you, Madam Chair, to the director, have we heard anything more from ICE? And will we might expect to hear something we can share with the parents?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Currently, ICE has developed, has come together and formed a writing team made up of teachers, consultants, school administrators from across Ontario. And they're working on those Catholic, they're working on the resources. And they're working on those Catholic, they're working on the resources to support Catholic school districts. Once the writing team completes their work, these resources will be reviewed and vetted by a panel of theologians appointed by the Bishops of Ontario. Prior to the release of these resources, they will undergo a final review and approval by the Education Commission of the Bishops of Ontario chaired by Bishop Burge. And it's anticipated that the first set of resources will be completed and made available to school boards for the beginning of September. The remainder of the resources will be made available throughout the year as they are completed. ICE is also in the process of developing an information package, like a brochure for parents, and this will be provided to school boards by late August. That's the latest update I have from ICE.
Helena?
Can you just explain by resources what that means? So does the, is it added to the curriculum? Or is it the curriculum edited, or...
The curriculum is not edited. Right now, we teach that particular strand through our Fully Alive Family Life Program. And what the, what the writing team will do, will look at where the curriculum expectations have changed or moved into different subject areas. And that's what they will be developing resources to support the teachers in the classroom from the Catholic perspective, just like Fully Alive is written right now. If things don't need to change, that they're similar to what the Fully Alive program is, they won't be writing anything different. They'll just be writing resources to support a whole unit. When we, I haven't done the match-to-match, you know, the curriculum, what it, what it looked like before and what it looks like now. I haven't, I don't have that in front of me. But that's the work of this, this writing team, so that the teachers who are using that curriculum will be using what ICE provides instead of what the prompts provide in the curriculum.
I'm sorry if I missed this, but just for clarification, with regards to the letters from parents, what action are they, interesting that we take, other than listening to their voice? Is there something specific that they want us to proceed with?
The parents who, I'll just generally summarize this letter, the parents would like the bishops to consult with them prior to sending out the resources to teachers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious as to why the board didn't take a slightly more, I don't want to say ruthless, but maybe a little more aggressive, like, take on these letters. I mean, we've got twenty-five thousand students, we've got a hundred and eight letters. It seems like the vast majority of the schools actually support the letters. Even if they didn't, it's really a curriculum that was set up by the government, so whatever happens, it's going through, if you know what I mean. I'm just curious as to why we weren't kind of like, this is what's happening. I mean, I guess you can consult with the bishops and the clergy and all those people, but, I mean, this is what's going to happen either way. Do you know what I mean?
I'm trying to ascertain whether there was a question in there, or just a statement, just a comment, okay.
Anyone like to comment on the comment? No? Okay. Uh, I think that means that Anthony Danko, oh, no, we need a, no absentee, no return to camera. Motion to adjourn, please. All right. And seconded by Helena, all in favor? Yes. And we will have a closing prayer. Trustee Danko.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Say the memorari. Remember, O most gracious Virgin Mary, that never was it known that anyone who fled to thy protection, implored thy help, or sought thy intercession, was left unaided. Inspired with this confidence, I fly to thee, O Virgin of virgins, my mother. To thee do I come, before thee I stand, sinful and sorrowful. O Mother of the Word incarnate, despise not my petitions, but in thy mercy, hear and answer me. Amen. In the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit.